Very good. Well, before we get into the agenda, there's a few items to address. First of all, very important.
We need to call the meeting.
Have to call it officially? Okay, then we'll call the meeting. And do the pledge first, then we'll do it. Okay, very good.
I'd like to leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands. One nation under God, individual right and justice for all.
Oh. Oh, this is a roll call.
Roll call.
I read your mind. It's not a figure.
President Everard.
Here.
Vice President Wazar.
Here.
Chair Zimmerman.
President.
Chair Zeller.
Here.
Tracy Brady.
Here.
Tracy Lakey.
Here.
And Tracy Serd, that's it.
All right. Now we get into the important, important things we have to do here. Will you want to recognize one current and one future birthday? Elizabeth, if you would be so kind, this will look up here, I will present you with a birthday.
This is going to be by the top of my house down.
Yeah, thirty. Thinking ahead, thinking ahead, we have another birthday that's occurring in two days. John?
John, tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Oh, yours today?
No, tomorrow.
All right.
Exactly.
I like all cake.
I once read that in a laws of repeating numbers, that an average class size of thirty, chances are ninety-five percent that two people in the room will have the same birthday.
Really?
Hey, I'll give you my gift to you.
Well, I birthday, my birthday's tomorrow.
I rest my cake. Happy birthday.
I'm terrified. Two people in the room, thirty percent chance.
Yeah, my birthday's on Thursday.
But my birthday and John's, they are the same day. Later.
I was too.
Thirty percent. So, happy.
I can project, yeah, with thirty, with thirty people. I have to find like that. Thirty, I guess, thirty two minutes. All right. All right, on to business.
Now they've parted the record.
Hey, are there any public comments?
I don't see anyone.
Anyone on the phone?
I don't see anyone.
All right. On to new business. So let's review the presentations first, or are we going to review the agenda?
Maybe not yet. We're going to do the, we need to review the items first.
Okay, we're going to be, so let's go to the agenda items.
Hold on.
I'll stop you. You guys have a chance to take a look at those?
This is not a presentation.
What, and one thing that's different as you look at the the agenda items, we're looking at the future agenda.
It's for Tuesday night, yes.
Um, one thing that's new, and was actually suggested by Elizabeth, um, rather than asking or calling or begging people to read items at the beginning of the meeting, um, we're going to schedule it. I'll rotate it around so everybody gets a chance, but that's actually, that'll actually be shown in the agenda so that you can see ahead of time whether you're going to be up for it. So are there any items on the agenda that we wish to call out, make note of?
I'll note that just again, we, um, we're going to be going out for energy bids. And so this process, it's just who we've worked with the county on getting the pricing, and then they'll be closing. We'll lock into that price and then we'll back and ratify that to the board, and that's for electricity at, uh, at our various sites. So that's why that has a to be determined. Um, but it's just to move forward with that process. So just so everybody's familiar with that. Um, the bids on the, uh, as the board requested on fuel, did the propane, and then the, um, diesel and, um, unleaded went through the remainder, and we'll revisit that again in a short term as the board requested. But the prices came in less than where we were in last year, so, um, that rate, so that was, that was awesome. Um, we've got some question for travel, for conferences, and, um, we're going to talk about, uh, several of the big items that are on here this evening. Um, the seasonal site closures, talk about the new train, trading. So we have some presentations out there.
All right. So again, any concerns or questions? If not, we'll, uh, forward it to that agenda.
Oh, and the other thing I will add is we did add, um, an item that, uh, looked at the agenda, the Village of Cary. So as you know, uh, Mayor Conick, um, had an emergency declaration, uh, based on storms, and it had a call from their village administrator, Omato, uh, to see if the district could assist with them. And our operations team, John Binger, about a day, rose to the occasion. Um, this agreement was put in place, um, many years ago. It was designed to help the county for storm side debris and how the district could be part of a solution on emergency disasters. And so we don't have an agreement with Village of Cary. So, um, what you'll see for Tuesday night, we'll read across the agenda, but it'll be an IGA with Village of Cary. Then the specific exhibits that will go with, we can then determine at a staffing level on a case by case basis. But the agreement that will annually renew. So that means we have all the county, the Village of Cary, and no one else yet.
No, it's never come out before. Um, I just remembered we had this plan. I'm like, boy, I bet we can quickly adapt that. So I was teasing Ben back here. I'll bet you that five minutes after the meeting, Elizabeth was going to say, hey, John, we probably ought to have one with everybody out there.
Elizabeth, yeah, it's a good idea. There's a term IGA intergovernmental.
Intergovernmental agreement, right? And, uh, and again, it is, we want to be a partner to assist. And of course, one of the things that we looked at was finding a location that worked, because depending on the situation, it may, it could be, this is a temporary situation, but it won't environmentally impact, you know, district property. So, um, I think that's important that we're looking at new things, but we're, we're a collaborative as part of that. And that, uh, what was that report that we had to do for, uh, agency collaboration, efficiency and all of that? This is another one where the district does collaborate with our.
And that storm was odd. I mean, you saw the different municipalities, some got two inches of rain, some got, you know, ten. So it was, I think Cary got really hit on, so glad we're working with them. Okay, so the agenda stands, or if you go for two. Financial planning. Elizabeth and Andy?
All right, I'm going to turn it to Andy. So what we have tonight, Andy has prepared our annual document. So we can take the board through the levy process and our planning with some assumptions that we're making going into the next budget year. And, um, this will be your time to see if there is, you know, remission with our direction or whether you're seeing things a little bit differently from your eyes. And, uh, and that will help us firm up to come back in, um, September for our levy process. And, uh, and again, this is all built on, we did include in your, um, session lab, ethereal, a reference I'm off. Andy's going to mention it, but the sustaining the dream framework, um, that the board approved. And that was our plan, knowing that where we had been, why we positioned ourselves about the deferred payments and for not taking our levy year after year and being responsive stewards, that ultimately led to the proposition question that was passed, uh, by the voters in November of last year. And this plan and what you're going to hear is, is aligning with that plan to stay forward with our actions.
All right. Um, there's a lot to cover, so I'm I don't know if fast, if you fast, let me know. If you have any questions along the way. As Elizabeth mentioned, we're looking at basically directives on affordability of the fiscal twenty-seven budget. So the objectives today are to understand the twenty-seven revenues. That's going to drive the budget, obviously. Um, to establish the twenty-five PTO levy. So we'll look at last year's quickly, and then what we're going to do with twenty-five, what we're recommending. Um, the planned wage cost increase, the non-personnel cost increases. Um, what we're proposing for capital spending, and again, I'll say this several times, it's very early on, right? Really four months into this fiscal year. So there's going to be additional capital spending between now, what was in your packet, what you'll see in November, um, and then determining the use of reserves, uh, as a sustaining the dream plan, VIDA. Uh, and then lastly, we'll do a quick financial projection. If you looked at your packet, you probably saw it, but we're just projecting the twenty-seven year that we're budgeting for, and then one more year out, because we're going to see the impact of additional operating levy from the proposition. Um, looking at the revenues, uh, this gives you, or no, a breakdown of the revenues for the general fund operating budget for fiscal twenty-seventh. Uh, you can see the majority, like similar years, eighty-six percent of property taxes. Another seven percent of farm leases collectively, that's ninety-three percent of our full revenue. So the last investment schemes, other state yardage, you make up about seven percent.
Did you say we could interrupt you?
Not yet. Oh, go ahead. Well, yeah.
No, just farm leases, is that percentage changed?
Yes, it is. And back on this to the slide. So this shows you a breakdown from two thousand seventeen, twenty-seven, so eleven years for green bar. Um, the big ones, the property tax, you can see it's really not changed a lot, starting at eighty-three percent, going up to eighty-six percent. What we've seen in the last few years, and that's that yellow segment, oop, oh, uh, the green segment, the farm leases. You can see that went down, kind of peaked in twenty-three at thirteen percent, so I'm trending down. Part of that's because we reduced the acreage. So Coon Creek forced us to take eight hundred plus acres out of the general fund, set aside to the dedicated accounts just for the Coon Creek restoration. So that's known, and that's obviously going away. It'll be all the, out of the crop plan production of fiscal twenty-eight. Um, and then corn, the Valley of Corns down now, which we'll talk about a little bit too. Another one you'll see is that yellow bar, and that's that state personal property replacement tax. It's kind of all over the place, but the last three years, it's trending down. We project that to continue. So jumping into the property taxes, as Elizabeth mentioned, this shows the district's actual PTO levy of two thousand twelve to twenty-four. Um, there's only been four times in those thirteen years that we've taken the full levy. So those are ones that are older than highlighted. The total, total average annual increase for the districts only been one point eight percent. Um, if you compare that to what PTO is allowed, they allowed almost three percent over the same time. So we've given up probably seventy percent, could have collected. In total, that equates to eleven point eight million dollars that we've foregone. And just as importantly, we would have an additional annual tax levy of one point six million more, um, had we just taken the full PTO one. And that's a big part of why we had all the challenge we had over the last decade plus. So I wanted to start with just looking at last year's levy, just to remind the trustees that are here and bring some of the new trustees along. Um, we started, we started with the twenty-three levy and raised it at four hundred seventeen thousand, the PTO, that's basically mostly inflationary increase. That brought the new amount to nine point five million. And then there's a debt service for our outstanding general obligation bonds. It was a referendum approved. We don't even issue the referendum. It goes right from the county, so it's not even part of the ordinance that you pass. Um, in total then, without any ballot measure increase, we would have seen a property, total property tax levy of twenty-three point three million. So that's if there is no ballot increase, but we know in November we passed that proposition, we know we increased the levy. So the actual level we put forth last year had an additional three point six million dollars related to the proposition. And the PTO levy, it brought that total corporate PTO levy to thirteen point one million. But what we did is reduce the debt service levy by the same amount. So as we look at that bottom in blue, if there was no proposition, we would have levied twenty-three point three million in total taxes. Because we have baited that same amount for the debt service, we still levy just twenty-three point three million. So there's no net increase to the taxpayers for last year's twenty-four levy. And that's what we're proposing again, the board's committed that to do for twenty-five. So we'll look at the twenty-five calc. So this starts with last year's PTO levy of thirteen point one million. And the PTO is a properties tax extension limitation. Um, that's again, just driving the general fund for the most part. We can raise it by two point nine percent. That's the inflation for the bill of the two thousand twenty-four. Um, it brings that total amount to thirteen point five million. And then we make an estimate, which we're pretty good at doing now, um, for new development. So I'm estimating we'll get an additional one hundred fifty-nine thousand from development. We can add that on, it brings the total levy increase, um, up four point one percent year-over-year, five hundred forty thousand dollars. Um, and then, so if we look at the abatement, um, that's the twenty-four levy and the little proposing for twenty-five. If we abate the same amount, three point six million in both years, if you look at the net impact of revenue, it's actually going to go from nine point five million to ten million, right? So that of that abatement is actually going to be a five point seven percent increase, or five hundred forty thousand dollars. So, and that's because that three point six million we collected last year also grows over PTO. Um, we increased by four point one percent, or a hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. So what we're proposing is for twenty-five, instead of baiting the three six, we abate the full three point seven. That way, there's still no net impact to the taxpayers, um, still real impact to the district. If we get to twenty-eight, we will recollect that. And then you would see the net, uh, property tax increase again would just be four point one percent. And then if you look at the total taxes that I'm twenty-four compared to twenty-five, so this is the PTO level we talked about. Um, that is the abatement, went from three point six to three seven. I bring in a new debt service levy, those new abated amounts, right, so we're going to subtract three point seven million now from the debt service. And we see year-over-year, the total property tax levies by the district would be three point one percent increased, seven hundred twenty-one thousand. Last thing I have to say on that is if we project now and look at next year's levy, that's kind of the fun part of it, right? So this is what we're showing for twenty-five, a total tax levy of twenty-four million. Um, and again, if you look at the top, we're abating that three point seven of debt service, so paying that out of the operational levy. You look at next year now, um, on that third line, there is no debt service paid, you'll be right. This is the last year of the debt service. So in twenty-six with PTO, there's nothing to obey. Um, as today, we grew up by four percent, three percent inflation, and another one percent for the development. And we come down below that, again, there's no debt service levy, no abatement. And we'll see the total taxes go from twenty-four million to fourteen point two. So a forty-one percent decrease of total property tax by the district in twenty-six for the next one. Just pretty amazing. Looking at our second biggest source revenues, the farm leases, they make up seven percent. We have about four thousand acres that feed the general fund of that twenty-seven hundred is cropped, uh, crop row production. And the lease rate, the revenue, it gets determined by the formula, which takes the acres, times the yield, times the price of corn, or corn futures, and then the percentage that the farmer's going to bid on. Um, and that corn price is made up of the average price of December twenty-six corn during the month of February twenty-six. So we don't have any really good idea what it is right now. We're trying to guess what it's going to be the average of February twenty-six, because that's going to drive the revenue, revenue fiscal twenty-seven.
It is. Is every acre corn sold?
Say that again.
Is every acre corn that we leased up?
Well, the twenty-seven hundred acres, I couldn't tell you. Some of that might be beans.
Oh.
But no, actually, just twenty-seven, that would all be corn, because that's all this Frenchy toward itself. That's just.
Based on that corn price, but each crop is dependent on, of the rotation of the individual parcels. So it could be corn, beans, wheat, it's based on that.
Oh, good. Yeah, out of the leases, just curious. And do we, do we force a fallow? Are you there's all of them before, or just that they rotate their three crops?
They usually rotate. They don't do corn twice in a row. Soil meets.
Soybeans could then add you up back and back and forth, so.
Randy.
Um, then this shows the actual, uh, farm lease driving by year in the green bar, the light blue, that is the budget. Um, and usually we're, you know, within, it would take fifteen, a hundred thousand, but again, it's hard to predict. And you can see that orange dotted dash line is the actual price of corn, and obviously we follow that trend. The one exception there is fiscal twenty-four. That's where we pulled eight hundred thirty acres out roughly, um, from the general fund and set aside. So this is where we're trying to now project what's it going to be for next year, what's going to be for twenty-six. So this looks at where we were fiscal twenty-three, right around this time, corn was at five sixty-six. And February average ended up being five ninety-one. Uh, for fiscal twenty-five, I said twenty-three, it was twenty-four. Fiscal twenty-five, we're at five eleven, an average at four sixty-six by the time we got to February. Currently, we're in right now, we're at four forty-eight. We were talking board last year, came in at four sixty-six. Um, I'm sorry, four seventy. We were actually budgeted four sixty, so we're a little under budget, as you're aware. And where we are to date now is four fifty-four, so pretty similar to how we've been. The question was, where's it going to be in February? So what I did is use four sixteen. That's what drove it. We did a couple other scenarios, if you look at the package, talked about, to see what happens if corn goes up to five, what happens if it goes down to four dollars, how that would impact the government. And that just shows those are, so we're going to four dollars, a four sixteen, a five. Um, when I do the projections, I'll go over with that. Under program fees, they make up only two percent. Um, the green again is the actual, the blue is budget, obviously for twenty-six, we haven't actually been there yet. Um, but you can see going from fiscal twenty, twenty-one, that red arrow going down, that's when COVID hit, right? So everything really bottomed out. And we've been slow, we actually recovered fairly quickly. Those green bars bounced right back, or revenue climbed up over a hundred nine thousand two later. But we've been very conservative about bringing that budget back up in line. And so in the budget year we're in now, we budgeted one thirteen, that's getting closer, getting back where we belong. Uh, for twenty-seven, we're growing that three percent. And again, weather could change, so if they had weather, you're basically, completely different. Uh, but basically, we're growing at three percent over the prior year, if you see experience. Um, for the hunting fees, we see that going down actually ten percent. That has to do with the change that was recently made about how we're going to treat our residents, right? Um, because we're getting less points through the process, we assume there could be less of them, less revenue because of it. So the estimates, about a sixty-four hundred dollar deduction. Camping and shelter fees, really kind of holding flat. I think I have a small three percent increase, so it's kind of pretty stable. If you look at then all those revenues together for services, we see a slight decrease of one percent year-over-year, driven largely by the hunting. Uh, investments, pretty simple, that gray line is just the Fed funds. So unless the interest rate environment, our blue line, that is the actual investment interest budget of the district. Um, you can see what folly there, most of our investments are brokered CDs. Um, for fiscal twenty-seven, we see the big downward trend, and in my projection, only interest rates flat. A lot of reasons why they may go down, some reasons why they may go up. Um, but the reason, I'm sure the revenue go down, or the interest is flat, is because they're spending down the reserves. So this shows the actual reserves, and you can see for the year that just done, fiscal twenty-five, uh, we went down about two million dollars. A big part of that was the camp funding of those camp projects. Um, we expect that in the twenty-six budget, we're showing reduction, reserves of two point six million. Again, half of that's the camp funding. Um, and as we get up to twenty-seven, we see a continued trend of that, obviously, and that's all part of staying the dream and using those reserves to sustain it, so we can impact the district operations.
Andy, can you remind me what camp is, capital?
Capitalistic management plan. Um, and the staff will be bringing you guys the camp plan in September. So the capital we talked about here are the routine repair and replacement vehicles, equipment, things like that. As you get into the big trails, parking lots and all that, that's all part of the camp. But there hasn't been any camp funding in the camp fund for the last two years, so it really comes from general fund reserves. State personal property replacement tax revenue, um, this shows the state's estimates. And you can see the blue is our estimate, the green is actual. So the state does do a very good job of estimating the overall revenue. It doesn't help as much. We're also on a different fiscal year end. Right now, they're on fiscal twenty-six, it ends June of twenty-six. They haven't given the projections yet for this, for the fiscal twenty-six, it'll happen end of this month, April, September. So when we get it, it's only going to give us an idea of three months of the year of budgeting for fiscal twenty-seven. So it's not a lot of help. Constantly been off by as much as seventy percent. Um, and you, you do see that it's fluctuating wide, it went from two hundred fifty thousand twenty-one, it shot to six hundred thousand twenty-three. Nobody could really explain it. Everybody's nervous about it, and sure enough, it's come right back down just as fast. The Illinois Municipal League does a lot of studying of this personal property replacement tax. Um, and they put this graph out about every other year. I've seen it, they've updated it for twenty-six. These are the funds the state is diverting from the state personal property replacement tax. So they're actually collecting this money, it's supposed to be set aside for local governments, and they're taking it as they need it. So this act, you know, obviously fuels the inability for us to project what's going to happen, although just kind of wait and see, um, how the approach is. So this is the district's actual budgeted versus actual revenue. So the actual is in green again, and the budget's in blue. Uh, if you look at the far right, the dark blue, you can see we're budgeting to continue that downward trend, turn it thirteen thousand three away. And you can also see we're going to be again, under budget this year too. See summary of all revenues, we show total revenues going up by one point one percent, a hundred eighteen thousand dollars. Jumping into expenses, we're halfway done. Um, to start, we're looking at the other operating, non-personnel, non-capital. And just to give you a guide and understanding of what they are, um, just looking at these two subgroups, collectively, they got ninety percent of it. So things like maintenance, utilities, fuel, property taxes, legal, these are non-discretionary administrative goals, right? There's not a lot to do. Um, this shows inflation year by year, uh, for two thousand twenty-four, it's two point nine percent. Right now, we're trending about three percent for two thousand twenty-five. And this shows what we've allowed the departments to grow their non-personnel budgets by year-over-year for two thousand ten to twenty-three. That green column is what we've allowed them to do. You can see it's all zeros, right, and then a couple of minus three percents. So over that time period, there's a total reduction of six percent against inflation of almost thirty percent. So very challenging. The last few years, the board has rectified that, as we've come up with a plan. Um, and you can see we've allowed, those colors are off, but we allowed them to grow more in line with inflation, three, eight percent, three percent. What we're proposing for this twenty-seven budget is allow to grow to two point nine percent, which is equivalent to inflation last year. And that's what's in the projections that were sent out to us. On the personnel side, um, again, the blue line shows the actual rate of inflation, and the green is the annual wage increases that the board has approved, um, year-over-year. And you can see prior to twenty-one, where we had COVID, inflation took off, things were aligned very well. Um, then they got off those couple of years of twenty-one, twenty-two, inflation was, you know, seven percent, six and a half percent. As inflation turned back downwards, we've been able to align that back, which is good. Um, and for fiscal year twenty-six, we're looking for a three percent increase. That would be for all non-bargaining employees. Um, the one fifty bargaining group, their contract goes through March of two thousand twenty-eight, and their contract includes the same three percent, so aligned with that. For the FOP police group, that contract ends March of twenty-six, so the end of the fiscal year we're in. Um, obviously, we will have a new contract, probably before the year begins, maybe we'll get lucky on that. But I've worked in the same three percent assumption for that bargaining group. Um, if you look at total wages year-over-year, this is kind of interesting, and then it only increases two point seven percent with a three percent across the board. Normally, when we do this, it's the other way, right? If it was a three percent across the board, we'd look at a four percent year-over-year because we have the four, seven, fifteen program, where we're giving those, uh, ten-year anniversary increases, as well as maybe other promotions along in there. So, um, it works out really good this year. The big thing that's driving it down, we've had a lot of senior employees. Employees leave the district, they're being replaced by newer, lower-wage loads. Um, for the health insurance, as you know, the initial rates came in sixteen point, sixteen percent increase for PPO, seven percent plus for the HMO, combined total of fourteen percent. We introduced that narrow network from the PPO plan and reduced, um, the PPO by the six point four percent, bringing it down to nine and a half percent net increase. Uh, then we introduced a new plan for the GLP ones, which brought everything down a half a percent. So the rate increase year-over-year went up ten point seven percent, but a nice reduction from where we started at sixteen percent. Then if you look at the total annual cost increase year-over-year, it's only went up six point two percent. That's, you know, employees moving to lower-cost plans. There's one more employee right now who's waived the district's insurance, um, and those things head up pretty quick. Now, open enrollment isn't for another month or two, so this could change a little bit, but again, probably really close to how it's going to end up. The required IRF contribution continues down, going from eight point six to eight point five nine. A really nice thing here is we've got a long trend of seven years. So it was at twelve percent, trending down to eight six. So I would say at eight five, eight percent, eight and a half, when you look at any employer that's been in IRF for twenty-five plus years, that tends to be the cap. Sometimes it goes lower than that. So I think that's where we're there, unless we see a big fall off from the investment rate. So I think that's where we're there, unless we see a big fall-off from the investment rate return. Um, and the other thing that's really positive, the difference between that twelve percent, if you go back to two thousand twenty-one, where we are now at eight-sixty, it's a quarter of a million dollars a year in savings, having that order. Just highlighting the health insurance, again, year-over-year, budget to budget, only going up six percent. And then total personnel expenses, that only went up two-point-nine percent. We look at total personnel as a percent of the total operating expenses, we're at seventy-eight-point-nine, down a little bit from this fiscal twenty-six. For the next twenty-seven, we still trend down a little bit. We have over time, you know, it's gone up slightly from seventy-five, ran up to seventy-eight. A big part of that is we're not letting the non-personal expenditures go, right? We say part of this, uh, denominator's fixed, and the numerator's still growing, you know, it's going to be a higher and higher percentage. When you get to fiscal twenty-eight, and we start having more funds to work with, we'll start seeing that trend back down. Um, and then just in summary, total revenues up one-point-one percent, as we talked about, total expenditures up more, two-point-nine percent. You see the net surplus on last year, with this current year twenty-six, of five-hundred-and-eleven thousand going to seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand, and that's before capital. So quick, we will look at the capital, we have the list in there with all the detail, if anybody has any questions, you can throw them out. One thing I'll say again, is this is early in the process, there's going to be some changes, some add-ons, I'm sure, between now and the number. The column on the right shows how this is being funded, and what we'd like to see, the way they should be, to be sustainable, instead of seeing reserves going down every row, every piece of equipment, reserves, should all be from revenue. These are all regular routine repairs, replacements, it should be covered by the same annual revenue, but obviously we know that's not our situation. Um, we do have a couple where it says deferred, and that just means we're not funding it, it wasn't included in this budget that the question was made. They didn't include it, one was for an additional vehicle, and the others for, obviously we're redoing the furniture in the offices, and we're holding off on the big administrative costs that are self-inflicted. One other thing to note, Ben O'Day pointed out, we had, we doubled up on the Prairie Trail North, they had it in at twice, twenty-two cups, two-hundred. Um, I didn't have the chance to pull it all the way out through the financials, but I did crack it here, which brings the capital up to four-hundred-six thousand. Two B chain. So looking at the summary again, uh, operating deficit before capital, we're at seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand. Subtract out the capital, it brings that operating deficit to one-point-one billion for twenty-seven, compared to our current fiscal year of one-million-ninety-five thousand. So sliding. And lastly, just a couple slides projecting a spoiler, so these are the assumptions I held constant for fiscal twenty-seven and twenty-eight. The company opera, the operational levy increased four-point-one and four percent for twenty-eight, wages I held at three percent. Location may grow two-point-nine, as we talked about for twenty-seven, I grow to three percent under all three scenarios for twenty-eight. Um, the capital outlays, I think in the summary I sent you, I showed six-hundred, five-hundred thousand, the actual number I used, that's why I bolded, there's nothing to tell you that. Um, and then we did increase the camp outlays to a million for twenty-eight, because we're going to have the additional revenue. And so those are all the same, as you look at the most likely, which is our twenty-seven budget, and then the next one's the best case and worst case scenario. And then the assumptions I changed, the core future, we had a four-sixty-five and four, which we talked about. Um, interest rates have a huge impact, but I brought them up to five-and-a-half percent under the best-case scenario. It's just more of a distraction, the worst case is brought them down to three. State PPR, PPRT, um, for the for the best case, I only reduced it by six percent, year-over-year right now, we're looking at a thirty percent reduction, the worst case, I reduced it by fifty percent. And honestly, I think that thirty percent's quite possible, out of all these, that's one of the things that's probably most likely to happen. Health insurance, I, um, for the, for the most likely, I'd be having to go up to six-and-a-half percent for next year. Um, and in the worst case, I did seven and ten percent. And then quickly, just to look at those and compare to the budget, fiscal twenty-six that we're in right now, um, I project the reserves for this year to end at twenty-two percent or two-and-a-half million. Um, I'm basically just taking the budget of revenue, less than budget expenditures. I have adjusted the camp based on what's actually been said, what would that be? So I think the two-and-a-half's a pretty reasonable number to work with. As I go forward and look then at the most likely scenario, which we're calling the preliminary budget twenty-seven, you see that that deficit of one-point-one million brings the reserves down to ten percent, and that assumes that we spend seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand on camp, which I think is a reasonable number, number. The ten percent's okay, the one-point-two million is enough to work with from a liquidity standpoint. Um, but we have to get beyond March thirty-first to twenty-seven, and that's where we start to get an even tighter crunch. And as we look out to twenty-eight, this is where the good news is, right? All of a sudden, your revenues for taxes go from eleven-one to fifteen-point-four, you go from a deficit of one-point-one to a surplus of two-point-seven million. And then I bring the cap up to a million bucks, because that's really the more reasonable amount, that's probably what we'd be spending every year to stay on top of things for, you know, at least the unforeseen future. We still end up with three-point-four million dollars reserves just at the end of twenty-eight, and they're already up to twenty-eight percent of annual operating expenses. Um, I didn't do the best case, but I, you know, just to show you the worst case, because normally if you sat through these, you know, three years ago, and I project the worst case, it doesn't look good. Even in the worst-case scenario, I mean, you know, obviously if the blacks wanted to be at worst, we're still showing anything with two-point-nine million in reserves of twenty-four percent, just by the end of fiscal twenty-eight.
It shows the impact of the referendum.
Um, and then you see the tax rate, it's been going down again because we've taken very little levy increases, also the EAVs are growing for the county, so that's you get up to twenty-six, when the property taxes go down by forty-one percent, um, our rate should be the lowest, lower than it's been in twenty-five years. So then just to review then for the consensus, uh, we're looking for that levy increase of four-point-one percent, I'm going to build that bridge in September then, based on that, abating three-point-seven million versus a three-point-six. Um, and then maybe we have to do by February, but that's not an issue in twenty-six. Um, the economic wage increase across the board of three percent, that would be, you know, combined economic. When the wage increase is this low, it's difficult to do a merit portion of it. So it would probably be to everybody who gets anything, I would assume at this point. Uh, the total non-personal cost increase around two-point-nine percent. Um, this one, we'd like to get a direction tonight if we can, or at the latest, next week, because that lets us get our managers going and building the detailed budgets, so. And then the capital spending of four-six thousand, I have the plus sign because that will grow, but you know, I, I think it would be under a half a way, but I'm sure there'll be some things to pick up. And then total operational reserve spend of one-point-three, I have the plus sign there again, because we find more capital priorities.
Very impressive.
Well, how many years in are all of you, and I know this isn't a bunch of presentation, this was just for us, when you, the one you presented to the the county board, how many years have you won the award for best? We expect the same.
Andy was winning awards when I was on.
Those were the, I still guess, so there's two, there's the Gaffer now, which is the annual financial, and then there's a and the county gets both of those two.
And we know what's not in here, but it will be in your, your next presentation is the, you know, kind of the productivity measure, where the, the head comp has stayed relatively level, despite of the growth of, of your, you know, of twenty-six thousand acres, so we've really maintained that.
We have to, there's so many information.
But it's an amazing story, and to the staff, and to the board, and the, uh, fiscal control, and, and all of this, and so this opportunity strategically of why that sustained agreement was so key is yes, we had ballot, we protected the land, now we're moving in to take care of the land, to make it healthy, and really it's critical, and this is coming at a time, and so going forward, be able to sustain that and get us in a place where.
And that's budgeted for, it's included in them, we didn't see the line item for it, but no, no need to, but the fact that it's in there, knowing that big expenditure's coming, it's solid.
That's a question for my own education. Back a slide or two, could you talk more about the reserves in the spring of twenty-seven? Wouldn't they be lower?
So.
Most likely.
At the fiscal twenty-seven, they'll be down to like a million dollars. The problem is, we don't, this March of twenty-seven, we don't have any real revenue coming in till May, June, July. So there, and that, and then you're going to start getting this big property tax increase, even if we didn't have the proposition, we still would be getting a ton of property tax, because that's what we get, it really is May and June is that. So once we get to that, we'll be fine, and it's going to be increased. But to get it from March of twenty-seven to May, June of twenty-seven, that's where we're probably actually going down to zero, and maybe looking at having to issue taxes, just initially more have some short-term borrowing mechanism to fund that. We may not, um, because a lot of times, things are different than we think, maybe the state PPRT takes off again, you know, a couple of thousand. Um, vacancies could, well, they can end up.
At that level of reserves, does that follow the guidance that was mentioned in the reading materials, the two months?
So it doesn't, so that was, that guidance comes up to be sixteen percent, right? So I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about actually going to zero potential. And again, it's, you know, the board's prerogative. I'm not afraid of it, because it's a ninety-day window, and it's not something that may or may not happen, it's property tax, all right? Those are geo, when you do the geobod, it's, it's an assurance, right? So we know it'll recover very, very quickly. You know there may be a chance where we have to do something to get liquidity to fund that. Um, if that proposition wasn't there, this, there's no way, I could be looking at the audit list, and this would be a a, you know, a huge exercise to figure out how we're going to get through it, and how we're going to learn.
You answered my next question, which was, does that make you nervous? You answered it.
No, but that is, this was the plan. And, and it depended on that passing, that made everybody shy, we, you know, it was make or break, and we never would have taken reserves, probably even down to sixteen percent unless we had a plan that we knew could touch and start moving away from that, but never go bullet, I mean, there would never be anything in front of the board. If we had a way to fix it really quick, I would probably move sixteen.
You know, the original, when the ballot, when the vote count was done, initially, it had failed. And then it was the after tea balancing, and
Wow.
counted two weeks later, then it was on at the top, so yeah, it was.
Next, another sort of philosophical question. As you all look back at the last decade and see money that was sort of left on the table from not, I don't have the right language yet, but, um, do you see that informing decisions going forward?
I hope so, so we, we talked about it recently, right? So, you know, you're going to get this three-point-six million dollar increase, but you have a million dollar deficit, so that right away now is a two-point-six, two-point-six million dollar increase. And you have camp funding two million, so you're really probably talking about a million point six, right? If in any year, we don't take the full levy increase, that goes down four to five-hundred thousand like that, and it's permanent. So now all of a sudden, you're, you know, you're a million, half a million, but now you're a million, right? And if you did what we've done in, in, we, the district, for five years, it would be all gone, and you'd be right back to where you started very, very quickly. It's, it's not to say you have to take the full amount every single year, but you've got to capture the chunk.
That'll be the most contentious meeting. That's where people will say zero, some will say take it all, and we have to hash it out.
And how we start with every year.
Yeah, we kind of did a, uh, I guess, a vote on it just three months ago, and we're trying to keep it flat, if not, reduce to three percent. And it's just not sustainable, so, as we basically kept since twenty-fourteen, uh, flat, and we've lost a lot of money. Oh, and it's putting us in a kind of a hard spot this year.
In a district, being that, um, under the Conservation District Act, don't have the multiple funds or different revenue streams at hand, so we're dependent upon now the general fund levy, that then we have to have enough to sustain it, put into the capital investments, as deferred needs, which is a lot to be done on the land, we protected the land, but from natural resource restoration, ensuring that it's healthy, that buildings that need to I mean, that's where the four-to-forty plan of building out, that our camp plan, we need to catch up, and then we need to maintain, but it requires those investments. Um, so what we did is we, there's a bigger price tax on all of these things, because it worked out at the time. Inexpensive take care, so it is costing the taxpayer more because we didn't invest time that. So I think that there are lessons learned, um, but again, we've managed through that, but we also.
Andy, thank you very much. In terms of the, you've asked for input from us on the two-point-nine for the non-personnel, um, comments on that, any objections to go with that? Well, conversion of accounting assistant, Andy, want to stay for that?
Yeah, go ahead. So our accounting assistant is part-time right now. Um, I've been with the district over seven years, is a full-time employee. Um, then she went to part-time and brought another full-time person in. So she's very seasoned, has a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge. She's recently, just a few weeks ago, told us she's going to retire, she's done, um, given us a higher D of like over first. Um, she really doesn't have the ability or desire to work on that at all. So two things, one is we need to get it built, obviously, right away. The second is, you know, it's a, it was budgeted for three days a week, so it's a really opportune time, for really a relatively small cost to be able to bring a full-time employee, kind of shore up the accounting department a little bit. Um, we have most of the critical functions cross-trained, but there's a lot of nuanced things that, you know, Jean might know, or Sue might know, or Linda might know, or I, you know, um, we'd like to obviously get those right better. Also, in that summary, uh, we gave you a page and a half of additional responsibilities that are put upon the accounting department. Uh, I'm sure if we split more time, I mean, we could double that, just, just in the last three years, not any additional staffing support. Um, and even outside of that, we always intended to be more reactive, right? So we're just going from deadline to deadline, um, versus, you know, trying to be more proactive, have time to look for, and so we can think efficiently. Um, again, kind of have to fill a position right away, we'd like to implement this year. Uh, the total cost I'm showing for this fiscal year is only ten thousand dollars. Based on the planning, we're also using a seasonal HR positions, you know, two days in the season. So that's his dawn and gone, and so we're going to use what's the budget for that to sustain this for fiscal twenty-six. Um, then for the full year, I think the total cost is twenty-eight thousand bucks, most of that's benefits, the wages only go five thousand dollars. That wasn't included in that two-point-seven increase I showed you, um, but it's such a small amount that it doesn't really change, it goes from two-point-seven to like two-point-seven.
You can have those vacancies somewhere else, it's not worth it. Jenny, Andy, anything to add? All right, thank you. Any objections? Let it be written, let it be done. All right. Do you need any more time in this presentation?
Yeah.
All right, seasonal site closures.
All right, so, uh, this has been something that, uh, the team has identified and we're going to present tonight, and thank you, and then, uh, talk about kind of what's proposed and why, and then do a great job of the narrative, but I think, up in best presentations.
So we'll go ahead and get started, so, um, our recommendation, uh, is, um, we recommend adjusting the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six seasonal closure procedure and associated messaging to state that seasonal sites are closed December first through April first. Um, that's currently not, um, what we do, we, we currently base it on snowfall, um, so we'll get into that in a minute. Next slide, please.
So in twenty-fifteen, uh, staff produced, uh, a matrix we developed. Um, we took several things into account when developing that matrix, you can see there at the bottom of that slide. Um, it took into account visitorship, um, the sites, geographical location within the county, available winter recreational activities that take place at those individual sites, and then the lot material, whether it was asphalt or gravel. Um, the purpose in developing this matrix was twofold, it was, um, to, to focus the district's limited resources on the most visited sites, um, while also prioritizing staff time, spending, the useful life of part of our infrastructure. So you, the map here, you can see, we've plotted out, um, red dots are the sites that are closed, there are seventeen of those sites that we're closing, that I think are currently closed. Um, and then the, the green dots are, uh, the twenty-two sites that we've opened cloud, um, sure, sure access, um, throughout the whole geographical area of the county, so we've split it up, so the entire county is covered, has access to some. So the entire county is covered, has access to some over sites throughout the weekends.
And when we say open close too, we're we're talking, um, uh, the sites are just all open to walk in still. Um, so that that's something for you know.
Yep.
Um, next slide. Uh, so our past and current procedure and messaging, um, so these are some of the the things that were included. Um, parking lots closed with two plus inches of snowfall. Parking lots reopen with mild weather after January second. Parking lots closed for the season. Site remained open to walk in traffic. Um, you can see on the right hand side there, there's our landscapes, uh, feature on our closures. Um, it's pretty complicated. Uh, we get a lot of confused calls. Um, it it it's just an if then when, um, kind of situation here. So, uh, messaging is confusing and complicated, and it sometimes sets the unrealistic expectations for when we're open or when we're closed. Um, and that results in disappointed visitors. So, uh, we're hoping to clear all that up. So it's clear expectations and everybody knows when we're opening.
So one additional kind of outlier consideration to have here is the, uh, the canoe trail, the water trail, um, in Glacial Park on the Never seen Creek. Um, we typically, uh, have always closed, uh, some of the exits of the creek at Pioneer Landing, Never Seen Canoe Base and Lyle C. Thomas. Um, so we would continue to do that. The, uh, one exception is the, uh, Keystone Landing Parking Lot. Um, that has remained open in the past and we're proposing that that still remains open. One key difference would be that we would actually close the trail officially during the same timeframe from December first to April first. Um, and that's really a, uh, for safety, you know, measure there. Would leave the lot open because it is a very popular lot and it's used by a lot of other, um, people to access the site in different ways other than the trail.
And so our proposal is that seasonal sites close December first through April first. Um, and then they do not continue to reopen throughout the winter. Um, the benefits of this are that it will use staff time more efficiently. Um, and it continues to keep that primary focus on those most used sites in the regions. Um, and it'll help, uh, create clear messaging and public expectations. Slide. So we, um, Ben and I reached out to contacts, um, at all of our local forest preserves and conservation, um, districts. And we found that, um, these closures, uh, and what we're proposing is actually pretty standard and kind of the norm everywhere. Um, so they're all doing something similar with set dates. Uh, that's a really common practice. Um, and so while they all have their own little nuances in their own way, the same thing way we do with certain sites. Um, it's they all follow a much simpler procedure and use similar messaging, um, like what we're proposing. So the action, um, that we recommend is, um, tonight taking, uh, consideration of this, maybe discussing if you feel the need to, um, asking us any questions and then on Tuesday's regular meeting, um, uh, uh, direction for staff on how to proceed.
Would you have onsite notification year round about when the site is closed?
Currently do.
Not year round. We we have right now, our, our, what we have in practice is signs on the gates that are full of saying, site is closed, but it's open to pedestrian traffic.
In terms of the schedule, although you post that, isn't that's I think that's what Bonnie's asking is.
Just on our website, it's on our website.
At the sites, don't you have something on the?
Yes.
Got a kiosk door that it has.
But they they don't have our.
You don't address site closures on that.
Okay.
Because they're they were so open down.
Then the question would be if we're going to standardize it shouldn't.
We we definitely could if we're standardizing it. Yeah, because previously it was.
Yeah.
If it's snowing two inches, this and that, we we definitely couldn't do that.
But now you the simplicity of the.
Yeah, we absolutely could.
Know. So I think that's a good.
We absolutely could.
Is there Gabe so you don't get trespassers or?
Well, we do, or we will be still allowing, um, site users to access sites by walk in. Uh, that's what we've always, that's always been our practice. Um, so even if the site parking lot is closed, really what we're talking when we say closed site, we're talking about a closed parking lot.
Oh.
Because we're not following them. But users, site users can still use all of those as long as they're not closed for hunting. Um, they can still use all of those sites to recreate.
And quite a few do. I I know I went to Exeter Marsh after a snowfall and I was surprised by the number of people. People were, you know, like running and, you know, walking dogs and all kinds of stuff. So.
Snowshoes.
All right. So anybody object to moving forward with the standardization here?
Yes.
I think it's.
We appreciate that. I think just so the board is aware and with the action. And so there will be, um, as this gets out going, there will be someone that will not agree necessarily with the decision, right? And then they will come at it. Pressure, um.
Well, they could argue the date should be different and all that, but you know.
Right. And and of course with climate events and maybe we get snow, maybe we don't get snow. But it's being consistent for all the things that are stated to to move forward. And we had similar, you know, when we tried to packing pack out, it was a change, you know, it's all concerns, et cetera. And this one, so again, it is a shift that's supporting will provide more efficiency effective.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, absolutely. We commend your effort.
Thank you.
All right, water quality. Over there.
Bartlett studies was on. You're Bartlett?
I'm here.
All right. So we've been working with Bartlett for, I think it's been about six months now on creating this agreement. And I'll let him take it from there. He's going to describe nutrient trading and, uh, the agreement between Northern Moraine Waste Water Reclamation District and the IPA.
Great. And you'll drive? I'll just say go next or something?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, folks. So I'm Bartlett. Um, I am, first of all, you'll see at the end, I'm not a broker. I'm not trying to sell you anything. I don't get paid by any of this. I get paid by the Walton Family Foundation to do water quality work in the Midwest. So let's just remove that off the table. I'm not here for a personal financial gain. I learned I have to get that out of the way right away because, um, people always think somebody's trying to sell you something. Um, so I've been doing this work for seven years, I think, coming off a program based in Wisconsin. I took it into Iowa and now we're down into Illinois. And I'll walk you through some basics just so you have a background to know why we're talking about it. And then we'll get into some Q and A at the end. So, uh, for this one, this pilot project is with Northern Moraine. Uh, they're down right, right at between McHenry and Lake County. Um, at was it Island Lake, I think is their base. If you go to the next slide, it shows their service area. There you go. Well, that's their plant, uh, right along the, uh, was that the Rock River? And there's the service area. So there's Island Lake, uh, Port Berington, I think it is, uh, and Island Lakes right there. They have about twenty five, thirty thousand people in their, uh, coverage. Uh, wastewater or water reclamation is wastewater. You know, it's taking our poop and our pee and cleaning it up and be able to put it back in the water. I'll go to the next one. So what's really important you for you to understand from nineteen seventy two, uh, and so still in the books is the Clean Water Act. This is what really got the, uh, United States focused on clean water. And basically anything that discharges into a well, you know, water is the United States, which is under debate. But everything we're dealing with is regulated. So if you go to the next one, the way to get there is two primary ways. If you're a wastewater treatment plant, sometimes if you're stormwater, sometimes if you're a CAFO or larger operation, you need a permit to discharge water. Uh, wastewater in particular, these are called point sources. So it's coming out of a pipe. You can measure it, you can kick it, uh, you know what you're getting. The other part, again, nineteen seventy two, was non point source, which is everything else, mostly, uh, farming. Any other kind of landowner, anything with the stream bank, uh, uh, erosion and things like that. That's all called non point source with the idea that you can't measure it directly. There's too much noise in the system. That was excluded from the permit system. And instead they're just like, we want people to do better. So we'll do some grants and some education to say, please. Uh, it didn't work real well. Anyway, go to the next one. The problem arose is with our Gulf Hypoxic Zone, uh, down off the, in the Gulf of Mexico, Gulf of America, whatever we call it now. That whole area, uh, has so much nutrient pouring into it, so much sediment, that it creates these large algae. Um, uh, what sheets that then die and they suck all the oxygen down with them. And so the fisheries have crashed. This is a problem that crosses multiple states in the South. And if you, as you look at the next one, uh, next slide, you'll see it comes from pretty much the entire Mississippi River watershed. And so it was not a, a problem anyone could solve quickly, easily, or even on their own. So the EPA, the USDA, uh, I think even NASA and NOAA are involved. And each of these states is part of a overall solution to try to help the Gulf Hypoxia area. The reason that's important for us is every state now has to include phosphorus and soon will include nitrogen in their in PDS permits, the things we saw before on each wastewater plant. Taking phosphorus out of these plants is pretty expensive. If you go to the next one. Oh, anyway, so, uh, and it's not just a, a national problem. I mean, just like Gulf of Mexico, it's also right around us. Uh, we've got harmful algae blooms, uh, popping up all the time. I don't know how many water advisories you've had in your area, but certainly in Illinois and throughout the Midwest. There've been a number of water advisories where they closed down beaches and lakes because of these harmful algae blooms that are popping up largely due to too much phosphorus and nitrogen. And phosphorus is a catalyst. It's kind of the limiting factor. So people focus on phosphorus a little more. Nitrogen affects the drinking water. The reason I've got this here is if you go back to that first slide of Clean Water Act, the EPA, in our case, the Illinois EPA, has power over the wastewater plant. That's their hammer and the nail. They do not have power over everybody else. So even though the blue is the source from wastewater plants, it's a fairly small part of the whole pot, but that's where the the hammer is coming down. So their limits on phosphorus leaving their plant is dropping significantly, even though it's not having a tremendous impact on the landscape as a whole. So if you go to the next one, so what this does, and you can kick it one more. So for Mohammed at Northern Moraine, he's right now at one milligram per liter in phosphorus and he's able to reach that with, um, kind of what the way his plant is to get down to where he's going in short order, point five milligrams per liter of phosphorus in the effluent. Um, that is going to cost him about seventy five thousand dollars a year in chemical addition. And he doesn't want to do that because that's, he just thinks it's dumb and he's right. Just throwing chemicals at a problem to have it precipitate out. But it all still kind of goes out into the watershed and doesn't do much good. So that translates to about nineteen hundred pounds a year that he needs to get there. If he were to build gray infrastructure outside the chemicals and many of the other areas and around us will have to do this, that can be millions and millions of dollars just to remove phosphorus. If they can't do the chemical addition like Mohammed can. So instead, what we've got is a, a trading program proposed where we start working with farmers and landowners to do prairie restoration. We do wetlands, we do stream bank restoration, or we do agricultural practices like cover crops, zone tillage, anything that keeps more soil and water on the land. And this all goes into milieu where you can actually start trading between the wastewater plant to get to there. In Mohammed's case, it'll end, you know, two thousand pounds he needs to prove to them and ends up being like five thousand, which I'll get to. Um, uh, so he needs to find five thousand pounds in the landscape, which removes more phosphorus overall and gets more people engaged in trying to reduce this nutrient pollution we've got going on. If you go to the next one. Uh, uh, just quick thing, uh, for farmers, when you're dealing with them and all, the cost benefit of any practice is wildly disparate based on what they could get from cost share and how much phosphorus is reduced. For the farmer, that matters a lot. They want to do what they want to do as makes sense. For someone like Mohammed or anyone who's buying, we just want the phosphorus credit. We just want that phosphorus removed. So the idea is that we work with farmers and landowners so that they can choose what is most effective on their land. In this situation, someone who is, it costs them two hundred dollars to get a pound of phosphorus off on the right, right hand side wouldn't make any sense if we're only paying ten dollars. But if they actually are doing a practice that makes sense to them and they're making more money and they get ten dollars extra, they're like, that's fantastic. I love it. So the idea is to give as much power and decision making to the hands of the landowner to make the best decisions for them in partnership. And that's what, that's what we've done. And I think the next one will give us the pay for performance, which is this. This is exactly what we've done with you in the proposed contract is we've met, we've talked about the possibilities. You choose what you want to do and implement it. It goes through a model. Once it's verified that it happened, we pay you based on that model. So it's done. We're paying for the phosphorus. However, you got there. In your case, you know what you're doing, but for other people, it's like, we don't care how you did it. Just show us what you did and we'll pay you for that. Everyone starts getting happier and have more stake in the decision making. And the money starts flowing where we believe it's much more effective and has some greater impact on the watershed as a whole. Go ahead in the next one. So what we did is we created this memorandum of understanding with the Illinois EPA that creates this small scale trading program. And small scale means it's got to be in the same watershed as the wastewater plant. We're not trading all over the state. Where Mohammed is, we're not trading with Rockford and we're not trading with anybody down in Champagne. It's literally our watershed, uh, which is a little awkward because there aren't that many farmers around. Um, but it let gives us a chance where everybody is putting their money in their own neighborhood to work for their own benefit and their own water quality. There are the next one. We'll skip through these pretty quickly. Anyway, sets it up. We're all looking at phosphorus. That's what we're trying to do. Pound of phosphorus equals a pound of phosphorus. Uh, there's flexibility. Um, we don't need site specific, specific plans. Like in Wisconsin, you have to get everything pre approved by the DNR up here. Down in, uh, in Illinois there, it's just tell us what you're doing in general. And then tell us what you did and we'll give you credit for it. And working with partners is key. So working with you guys is exactly the way this thing is envisioned. Go to the next one. An important one to know is, I said, you know, Mohammed needs this for twenty thirty. So why are we here now doing it in twenty twenty five, twenty six? Because we get to bank it. We get ten years in a bank to build it up. So let's him build up these partnerships and get enough in there. So when twenty thirty hits, he's got enough in the bank. So he knows he's okay and gets to keep going. It's to the benefit of the environment because all this starts taking effect now before it's credited or at least used against a permit. So we get the benefit in the environment all these years before we actually need, uh, to pull the credit. Um, oh, and important under the certification, there's zero transfer of liability. Uh, Mohammed has absolute regulatory, uh, responsibility. If something were to happen with these parcels we're talking about, that only translates within our contract. It doesn't, there's no liability for him not meeting a regulatory marker. Uh, and that's an absolute ironclad. Uh, no way that happens. And that comes from Iowa dealing with the farmers there and the Farm Bureau. And it was, it's an absolute, uh, marker and these things. All right, go to the next one. And so this is Mohammed's the red dot in the middle. And so you can see, I mean, you guys know this better than I do. Uh, there's Crystal Lake. So you guys are right in the heart of what we're talking about. And we're all in the same neighborhood, uh, working on this watershed together. Go to the next one. Oh, and the colors just have to do with priority. You get the further away you are from the plant, uh, the higher the ratio that they apply for effectiveness, which is where we get to, where you need about five thousand pounds overall. So what we're proposing in this contract, uh, we've worked with Gabe and all, is you're taking land and it had been farmland or other, other areas that is under production with phosphorus loads. We're going to preserve it. Uh, I think it's prairie and other restoration. Um, we're going to pay you for twenty years, uh, for that phosphorus. And every year you show what happened. We run it through the model. And we're going to pay you ten dollars a pound. Now, it gets confusing because there are ratios that get applied, but that's on our end. So if we collect, um, I can't remember Gabe, I think it's a hundred pounds of phosphorus from you, we're going to pay you a thousand dollars. When we then turn it into the EPA, the hundred pounds will get whittled down to about fifty pounds. But that's, that's on our end that we just have to show the ratios because they're going to come from all kinds of different places. But as far as you're concerned, every time we can show phosphorus reduction, which for the next twenty years should be roughly the same on this land, you're going to get ten dollars a pound for it, which hopefully will help you with operations. And now you have another financial piece to look at as we do more and more land restoration around the area. And hopefully this becomes a partnership that just keeps building and we can do more and more around where we are. And one day we can start talking grants because that'll be the next iteration of some cool things we can do. And I think the next one is my last one, which is just my contact, which Gabe has. Remember, not a broker. I'm not trying to take any of your money and I'm open for questions.
What kind of, what kind of actions would we do to reduce?
What we, what we propose in the IGA that the board will have running for Tuesday is we have two parcels that we're going to do restoration on already planned. And we take that credit of doing that prairie restoration. So it's retirement from agriculture into native prairie and, uh, the calculations around the hundred pounds of phosphorus reduction annually. And that's calculated both based on the inputs from the producer and then also the stabilization of the soils and nothing running off.
Are there any times?
For us?
Yeah.
I don't see.
Where, just as far as the seed, where was the catalyst for this started from?
What was the, where was the catalyst for this nutrient trading? Well, you probably are familiar with that. Oh, and Chesapeake.
Yeah. There's a lot of buzz around this in the Chesapeake region. It's all the same science and all the same practices. And it's really looked at as like, this is the future, incentivizing choices from farmers to install best management practices to reduce pollution entering waterways and putting dollars behind it. Because as Bartlett pointed out, the enforcement behind non-point source is just too nebulous. So to attach dollars and cents to it is my understanding, like it's the future.
Yeah, I think Bartlett said that it was the Walton Foundation, which was named after Sam Walton from Walmart. So it's his foundation money he set aside that his funding is, if I understood you correctly.
Yeah, it's actually, it's one of the, I think it's his grandson is the environmental guy. And it's part of their family's foundation. And so he's very focused on Mississippi River as part of the problem and these big problems like this. So he's putting a lot of money around to create mechanisms. They really like market mechanisms within that foundation. So they're trying to get this generating. And I see it in Wisconsin. I think we're up to fifty or sixty, no, maybe in seventy-five now, versions of this. Um, much more expensive in Wisconsin for a lot of reasons I can get into, but including they're a whole order of magnitude lower than where even Mohammed's getting to. So they're kind of ten years ahead of us as far as regulations and then uh, where the technology is, it's much more expensive to reach uh, their permit requirements, which means they have to do capital improvement. Where Mohammed can do chemicals and others can do additive, they have to do it that. So this is avoiding capital costs. It brings more money to the table. What I, and coming out of Iowa, what I'm finding is the best thing this does is it starts aligning, uh, creating new allies and aligning interests. And so you can start putting lots of different people work in, in common. And then you start going for grants to do even more and you just, it starts to snowball very nicely.
Oh, I saw that Illinois was this dark brown on your map. What is it with Illinois that sets it in that position that, uh, compared to some of their other states?
Uh, we're in the corn belt. Corn belt, right on the Mississippi with lots of, uh, water, water flowing through. So you're getting a lot of erosion.
It's not industry or anything else in that area.
No, uh, if you've looked at it, I mean, if you, when you look at just, uh, Illinois, you also have, and so this, in fairness, I would argue Iowa is even worse because at least you had the excuse of Chicago. And Chicago has now cleaned up their mess. So they added two new, really new state-of-the-art wastewater plants that has greatly reduced the amount of phosphorus, uh, flowing out of their wastewater plants where it had been a problem. Now it's really good. Um, so on the point source side, that's been largely as an industry reduced. But you're still seeing that the effect of the corn and beans and just the straight-up erosion we're seeing with more, uh, more rain falling more infrequently, longer growing seasons, so less snow cover, the tillage, uh, tiling going on in the fields. So you just get more flushing coming through. And it's the erosion that's really driving a lot of this in the phosphorus world.
And have we seen any positive impact in the Gulf?
It'll take, it'll take decades, honestly. Um, the, there's one of the issues we have is what they call legacy phosphorus, is that there is so much phosphorus in the soil from over fertilization mixed with increased, uh, erosion going on that if you look at the farmers now, the farmers fertilizer balance is pretty equal. Like what they're adding on is kind of what they're taking off. And yet there's still this legacy phosphorus to the point in Wisconsin where I'm in Madison, the lakes here, we have really bad phosphorus issues. They found, they literally take a vacuum and go to the creeks and start sucking out the muck and putting it in a processing plant because there's so much phosphorus in the bottom of those creeks that once new phosphorus comes in, stops coming in, that starts leaching out and actually kicks out more. So it's this giant system we really screwed up that we're slowly having to walk back and get back into harmony.
Well, I think we're supportive.
Yeah. Absolutely fascinating. Thank you.
Thanks, Bartlett.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And, and I'm serious. I mean, Gabe's awesome. And down the road, when we are looking at new land acquisition, let's bring it back and look at this. And then if there are grant opportunities, work on together. This is a source of outside funding that always helps to start to, uh, increase the, the cash match opportunity. So there's a lot of things I think we can do and I'm here to, to help. And not from the government, but still here to help.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.
Take care.
That's interesting.
All right. Yeah, that was, that was.
So this is just a twelve, this is a one-year kind of like pilot according to their contract?
Well, twenty years.
Oh, I've seen twelve months.
Twenty years, twenty years. No, no, twenty years is the timeframe. It's an annual, annually updated. So that's agreements only for one. Twenty years is what the.
And what do they get out of it? Are, are we selling?
Production.
They get, oh, so they get the credit and then they can give it to the guy who needs the, the permit to, for him to satisfy his compliance?
Yes, so he has to be.
He can pollute even though?
He has to meet those new thresholds by twenty thirty. So, so they're in advance of meeting those thresholds.
Bonnie?
Yes, I gave at the very end, he just mentioned grants and purchase of land possibly. What was he implying?
He's talking about just the overarching mechanism, having market-based mechanisms can attract additional funding. So once you start having these types of, so they talk about a lot of ones that similar to Chesapeake. I mean, you could probably speak on this, but they've been going a lot out there. When you have watershed-type groups that are bringing in funds and doing these types of programs and you can match those, those, uh, thousands or other types of grants specifically for nineteen.
Grants for purchase of land or grants for?
I don't know where he was talking about the purchase, but ones I'm aware of are, um, natural resource action or, or, excuse me, restoration.
Restoration, more restoration.
Exactly.
That's what I don't know about. What I thought he was implying was grants require land that is currently being farmed where phosphorus are being used and that we would evade it. That's what I thought.
Yeah, you, so you heard that too a little bit.
I am not familiar with that. I'd have to dive into that.
We said it's early. He said, as we get down the road, we can talk about grant opportunity to find out.
Really in a different mindset.
Yes, ultimately, I mean, we had a project and this kind of mashed up that we were ready to do the restoration. This aligns with that. So we've got that example with how many acres yet to be restored to eventually.
He may have been referencing, we'd have additional lands that we want to restore. As land comes on, I don't know if that's a, but I'd have to ask.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, if you answered your question, I would say downside. I don't think anybody does. So it's all upside right now.
And it's a nice pilot. If you want to stay on, you can. Otherwise.
That's the biggest benefit.
Yeah, and there's a kick out. You have a kick out clause. You don't like it or we're not, okay. I, I think it's.
Yeah. It's a good agreement.
Yeah, it's a nice.
Any objections? You see, no, yeah, let's go. Yeah. All right. Update on the twenty forty comprehensive plan, vision to twenty seventy-one.
Thank you. Brief update, Lopec. The, uh, it was just a couple of days ago that, um, Elizabeth and, and entered, uh, gave you guys a full load of information about a consultant that the Conservation District staff and trustees have been involved in trying to come to a, a selection on this, for this comprehensive plan. I, I think the saga started probably about seven months ago. We started putting a scope together and all of those things that go with it. Uh, I think we came to you in May and requested to go out for a request for qualifications. From that, we got seven really good firms. Um, and we were stunned by that, uh, that we had so many. Um, and quite honestly, any one of them could have done a good job for us. Uh, so we got the luxury then of, of taking that to the next level, reviewing those, those qualifications and narrowing that down. We, I think we narrowed it down initially to four, which we invited proposals from. Uh, those four proposals came in. Uh, we sat down again. We looked through those proposals. We ranked those proposals. We scored those proposals out and ultimately decided to bring three firms in for our interviews. Those interviews took place a week ago. Uh, we interviewed all three firms on, on one day. Uh, we put, we invited, um, a member of the Board of Directors, uh, Lisa Livingston from the foundation. She came in, sat down with us. Bonnie came in and sat down with us, uh, and we went through that interview process. At the end of that, uh, we rested for a couple of days because everybody, we wanted to just kind of get our heads around all that. And then we sat down on just Monday, uh, and, uh, embedded it out, talked it through. And at the end of it, um, the, the one that rose to the top was Upland Design. And I'm going to go back and say, any one of those top four firms would have done an astounding job for us. Incredible job. Uh, and so we got to pick fit and that was a very good thing. So what we've supplied to you, uh, in your packet tonight is their initial, uh, submission for the request for qualifications. Uh, their secondary submission, which was the proposal, uh, so that is in, in that. Um, and my, my last comment is, uh, we're not looking for an action tonight. Um, but we are looking for you to look at those and on next week, they, we have invited, um, Upland representatives to come in and be here in person to talk with you. So you can meet them face to face. They'll give a short presentation about who they are and, and what they're proposing with this thing. Uh, and at that point in time, we will be asking for permission to, for authorization to negotiate a contract for them.
So just two quick questions, Chad. The, is it the cost of their fees and services that I read that right? It was two hundred K?
It was two hundred and twenty-four thousand. That's the number that's in my head. It might be in change.
Yeah, and when you reflect back on the interviews, what were the two or three things or characteristics that distinguish that firm from the other firms?
I'm gonna turn that over to Bonnie.
Oh, geez, thank you.
Let me take some notes here about where to gauge your eggs are.
The recording is going, so.
We had a very exciting group come in Antero and they would be absolutely dynamic. And they have been dynamic in parts of the country, except they didn't cover all that the district needed and they weren't familiar with education program and a few other things that are specific to our district. So we, I think it was the conclusion that, boy, they'd be great to grab on in the future, uh, or something. It's very professional, very dynamic, just a lot of energy. And, um, then we had Upland, which, uh, was very, had a lot of energy. They had some good people and you sort of felt like you could go with them pretty well. And, uh, and so then they, then, and, but every one of them, let me say this first, every one of them needed something additional or some changes. But Hitchcock, I personally look at, uh, as sort of, I think, as Lloyd might look at. First, their original presentation was cutting corners. And so when I see somebody cutting corners, then I think, well, maybe their, their margins might be tight. Maybe something's going on here. Maybe they were a good company all in all, maybe years ago, but now we know what the economy is like. So I, and then their interview was disappointing. However, they do have some things that were very strong, especially for some of the staff members. It was a hard call. It was a really hard call. Um, I mean, I was, you know, I was pretty attentive. Sorry, I was, I was.
You've got more experience than anybody around this table, so.
Oh, yeah, I bet the staff have their own experiences too. So I had, I have to respect that. So Upland, I think, is going to work with the district well. And there are some, uh, staff would like some more expertise in a couple of areas for sure. And I think they're willing, is that correct? They're willing to present Zandell, so, or work on that. And I think John has done a good job with working with them.
I think the beauty of, of Upland was they brought, um, a, a, a fresh and exciting approach to it. They really want this project. You could see it. They all wanted the project. Uh, but I think they, they, I mean, they killed the interview. They absolutely killed it. And you could see that. The cohesiveness, that was something that was said among our group discussion. They really seemed to be cohesive. I mean, these are teams from different firms, you know, different agencies, all, or, uh, firms all working together. And you could see that cohesiveness among them and that was something. Uh, and then we followed up and, and sat down with the Upland folks and said, okay, we had some concerns here and here. And how could we work together to address it? And got that all out on the table and, and they basically said, okay, we're, we're looking at this. We're going to figure out a way to address it. So um, there seemed to be a great deal of flexibility there. Um, I, I just felt, uh, I think they're going to give us a good product. I really like their timeline. Um, because I believe this is going to be, you know, a seventeen to eighteen month timeline. And if we don't give it that due, uh, it will be shorted. And I, I, I really like that.
I want to compliment it. I mean, John, when leading the process, the team that put together kind of identifying what were the purpose and the focus of why we need the firm. Um, clearly what we've mapped out, since the district has not done this large of a plan, it is unlike, I mean, there's some basic steps, but that's why the consultants, not only did you have to have a project lead, but they had to assemble a team that had expertise in various subject areas so that it was not, you know, there are certain things like with the preparation process that is checked, right? You must have, it has to look this way. It has to meet this criteria. But then there's a lot of room and we're not only taking this to twenty forty, but this vision that takes us forward up to twenty seventy-one. And so the district is going to be very well set. Once this plan is done, they're going to have great information. It's going to, uh, be amazing. Um, and I know that the staff and board are going to work hand in hand on this project. It's so critical for our future. And I did like that, you know, on the other groups, we worked with them in different aspects. The one, we had worked with every, uh, member of their team that they brought. And with that, that could have been, they know us, they've done work for us, they're familiar with areas. But I think in this concept, what the district has, it's a fresh or new approach. When you're doing an assessment, they're going to challenge some of the things that we may assume or someone may gloss over because they just assume. And so we can be assured that we'll have a great project and they're very excited to be working for the Conservation District. And our, our ability to, that came across, they're, they're very excited to be.
Well, I think at your point, that seven companies are willing to, to work with us on it tonight. I'm told that a nearby, uh, Forest District, Forest Preserve, we got one company.
Two, three?
Yeah, we were, um, uh, until about one o'clock on the day the first request for qualifications were due, I was a little nervous because I think going in too. And I, I was hoping for about six, eight, you know, we held it with seven. And when I looked at the, got the draft, I was like, oh my goodness. And Amy Peters, who's the planning fellow, she worked with lots of firms and lots of these things. And she just said, oh my goodness, look at the quality from stand to stern on it. So again, we got to look at fit. Um, you know, there was one more thing, Ron, I want to point out that Upland did.
Um you know, there was one more thing, Ron, I want to point out that Upland did. Between the initial request for a qualification proposal they sent. We sent back to them a, this is our request for proposal. This is, this is the four corners of the deal. Their principal, Michelle, called me and said, John. Is it okay if we add somebody? You know, another firm in here because we're, we're not strong in this area here and we think bringing them to that. That's the flexibility that we sensed and saw.
Sounds honesty, it is, and that gives a gift, so.
Well, thank you for the work that you've done and we look forward to to seeing the presentation on Tuesday. And please, you know, review the materials so that we're ready to.
They have an impressive group of projects that have already worked. Very impressive.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if I need to get your word.
I did, but uh it was, it was hard in the sense because we know that. Staff have certain areas that they're strong in and maybe this company wasn't quite as strong in their areas. So John is working on that. Trying to make their little bit, their weaknesses as strength.
The flexibility they're showing, you know, and 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 uh adapting to the uh. E- Elizabeth and I and Caitlin sat down and said, okay, here are a couple of, you're really strong here, here and here. You know, what can we do about this? And they were like, this is what we can do. So and that's what you do. This is the the negotiation we go through now, is to make sure that. We understand what they can produce, they understand what we want, and we agree to it.
They're gonna, they're gonna bring in, they're looking to find another, another consultant to come in to handle the area. See that we identified that was a gap. So we'll end up with a really strong result and it's going to have. Again, sound science from assessment, um solid research methodology, uh survey of of. Community involvement, community engagement, which will be, and they'll talk about that, but. This is really a big community engagement process to to be out to the community, getting their responses and addressing, helping us sort.
But just to clarify, if they bring a consultant to work with them, that's on their diet as a part of the overall package, as opposed to a separate charge to us?
We're negotiating part of, so that's kind of a guideline. We still are in the negotiation piece, so on Tuesday night, what we're looking for is to move forward with negotiations. And we're gonna be refining.
And we really haven't started.
They were originally the least expensive of all.
Uh I, yeah, I do believe that was.
Because I think two, it was forty-two thousand or one, two forty-two.
But I do want to clarify that, it's not why we'll bring it.
No, no, I know, I know, I know, but just when, when we're adding proving that company. They were the lowest anyway, so maybe.
When you look at the cost to do this type of work and what we learned and what we're asking, the ticket price and. County could probably talk to what you put to expend on your vision county plan. Uh it's not inexpensive. We can talk about half a million dollars to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do this type of work. Um and so when you customize, so then again, there's gonna be, it's not that we're directing to say, hey, consultant, go do this work and then report back to us. It's a very hands-on, so there's gonna be staff resource time. Um but it's gonna end up with that. I believe very strong project.
I asked, when, when Upland does their presentation, will the rest of the board members be able to ask questions or? Or is it just a presentation?
We'll probably ask questions of them, absolutely, absolutely.
It's good to know you. She wants, that's uh that's, she wants to get to know. You know, let's, let's, let's kick this off.
Alright.
Ready?
Well, yes, thank you for the work you've done and again, we're anxious to see them on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Alright, Elizabeth.
Okay, a few things here. So uh if you haven't seen, I know some of these have commented, beautiful job to the marketing team, but yes, you've seen the. This is the second issue of the new look. Uh it's a smaller version because they've shifted new kind of. Uh design format and different types of paper that we're using, but well done. So that's out in everybody's mailboxes and online. Uh for fall registration. Um the uh McHenry County Water Forum, um and we will be tabling there and sponsoring is on Wednesday, September tenth. At the college from five thirty to eight P M. So again, always a great event. Um very informative, good to connect with community and so I would tend. It's about watersheds, so I encourage you to be. It would be a busy week though that week because um on Tuesday night. Um you know, we're having a meeting, a joint meeting with the foundation out of Pleasant Valley. Um you'll be able to come early uh around four fifteen to see the Bison. And then we'll have dinner and then uh we're gonna have a meeting and uh Kevin uh from the Blue Farm, who did the retreat. Uh back in August will be joining us. We actually met this morning. Sean and I met with Kevin to go over. Uh the details of what, and he's pulled everything together. We'll be inviting the executive team and kind of beginning to go a little bit further into. Some action steps and plans. So that's on the ninth, the meeting will start at six. We'll also talk about. Um but once again, then also the board twenty forty plan, so that's on the agenda. Um and Christie should have sent out a thing for your dinner. So let her know and we'll make sure that that is covered. And then, of course, we moved up the committee of the whole. On the eleventh, which is that Thursday, so you can have three nights in a row with the district that week if you choose. Um but we, we need to see you on the eleventh year and we'll be presenting our capital asset management plan and and next steps, so that'll be a really important. Uh getting ready for the lovely presentation of the lovely people for tonight and all that. And then we have a break. So that's up and coming. Um. The other uh area that I just wanted to update everyone on is, uh as you recall, we have sent out. Communication through our response to public notices process. Um and when we get noticed because we're adjoining our adjacent landowner. Um we'll send it through our process to see if it meets a particular area and we did send. Nation as reported last month to City Marengo on their Z V A. On a proposed development of a a change in use um. From a golf course or an RV park, et cetera. And so um. They had postponed the meeting. It was on uh Monday night. Gabe was able to attend. The meeting and Gabe, if I'm wrong, um the Z V A, the comments, we were the only one that sent in comments. On that. Um there was a question raised that, you know, why would we send any comments uh onto this? And of course, we don't send them all the time. We only send them if they. React in a certain way that requires us for non-regulatory, but if there's something that we're gonna share, certainly would since you were. So the direction is, they had modified the plan, right? They're only putting ten sites. In the floodplain portion, so that was a change um in that direction. And then they needed to communicate with fire chief, the police chief. And city engineer on the plans to see what they felt, because public safety was a certain, anything else that you.
Did all the issues that were discussed by the board?
But they had approved it to go forward with those conditions.
Limitary.
Limitary, so that. So we all considered that at that point, nobody reached out to the district, but you know, we've done our part and uh saw the process.
Hey, were they appreciative of the information? At all, or they hide it? No, I mean, because actually it went out. Down too.
I think that there was some that were appreciative and others were wondering why the district would. Provide any information. I think the comment was. Why, why is the district commenting on this project and not other projects? I said that we do comment on other projects. That isolate project, but the district's not gonna respond on every single project because. You know, that's not in our scope, just because of the process, the public notice, we respond to public notice. And on our, we have a long matrix that we evaluate all the ecological impacts and. Public service agents, we're just providing information so they can.
So you would say it went fairly well, challenged, but fairly. I, I'm from this area, so I know the challenges, so.
Asked with. Under approval of those other. Settings, they want engineers to make sure that the engineer is okay with the development. And they want to make sure that the safety components of the project are there, so they're gonna. Speak with or have the project go through lease review, then also fire review, specifically associated with the safety. Uh mechanisms, if there is a catastrophic flood, how would uh smatter patients especially? How would the the people that are camping be able to get out?
Thank you. Thank for attending, you know. I've never understood that campsite stuff with us. You're getting away, but the population density is greater than. Be that as it may. So. Uh my term to to comment and uh this the only, only uh thing I wanted to mention is. Uh we talk a lot and Elizabeth hounds us on the Open Meetings Act and and adheres to it. And I think there was, you know, two recent events that really kind of highlight the importance of really following those things closely. Uh if you, if you've heard any or seen any of the news stories on the Huntley. Uh the city meeting and then the uh Crystal Lake Park District. And both of those have have been accused of violating the Open Meetings Act. Voting on things that were not consent agenda, uh. Not following, talking about things that aren't on the agenda and uh you know, they've gotten uh. Black eyes for it.
It earned one in Crystal Lake, it was pretty heated.
Yeah, yeah, from what I, what I've read.
I did speak.
So you did? How was it?
What was the resident?
Never, a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of heat, I understand, so very much. But I, I, I bring up the point because, you know, we really try to follow that closely and and I think we do adhere to it very well. And uh so, you know, you hear her, uh you know, cracking the whip on that, uh appreciate it because she's keeping us out of trouble, so. Really know. Alright, um so I have all the, are the public comments? Does anyone come into the room?
There is not, are not, keep it clear.
Well, I'll bring this up. I don't know where to, I should ask you where to place it. I have a request from a former principal of. School, school system in Marengo. He would like to add one week of fishing. To the app, right after the hunting program at the quarry. So he died, liked, he would like to see, well, the Marengo people always use to fish there. So if his, he called me up and said, could you at least have one week of fishing right after the hunting?
So something staff could look at and back to us on?
So this is a site that's not open to the public, right? With no public access. There is hunting at the site. There's hunting at the site. And.
So there's limited access during a period of time?
Right, right. So he would like to see fishing added for one.
We're just walking around that facility and my initial impression, I guess, would say.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. Now that's why it's, it's one of the reasons.
Which side was said, Bonnie? It's a quarry. I'll take you there sometime.
Yeah, it's not, it's not open. Yeah, but it's, it's really, you know, kind of blocked off, but it's really primitive back there. It's, it's, I mean, yeah, we went there because geologically the. The bedrock actually comes right up to the surface, which is why it was a quarry. So it is a really neat thing to 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 see, but it's like, I'm a fisherman, I was like, whoa. So I can, I can see where the comment's from.
Bonnie, I appreciate you bringing that up and I think we have to to look at things of how different ideas bring into the system and I think that's one of the things too when we get to the. Comprehensive plan is helping us as a staff, you know, an initial request. That's made the precedent setting and how it fits and then others. And so, and again, we always want to be accommodating and be responsive, but yet.
And so as a board member, I get a call from a resident. And they ask me, you know, they suggest this idea. Is this the right time for me to bring it up or is there other procedure I should?
I, I think it's the, well, seems to me that, you know, we, first of all, we just had public comments, you remember the public, so they could sit that. But, you know, I think it worked to the point of other, I mean, there's the agenda.
You're bringing it up, you're sharing it with the group. There's, you know, just here, this is what we've heard, you know, you. And it's, it's good for the rest of the board. There's always, you can call me as well, but I think it's great. That we're sharing, because I will share it with the rest of the board too, right? It's important that all that information is held amongst the board, because you obviously.
My first time getting a request.
We often have members' comments, just so you have public comment. So we have members' comment at a government level, so that might be a guess.
Yeah, so, or we can add it to, when we get to mine, when it's kind of open, I can just say, anyone else have anything? I remember when you brought up the situation, or the comment about uh. Not bikes, but electric electrifying bikes going on, you know, that was something and we've heard back and it actually changed some, some policies that was off of it, so. I think it's good to to do that. Some are real minor. I've uh talked to Elizabeth a couple of constituents that said something to me, it's a minor. Things, you know, hey, there hasn't been a burn in my area for a while, can you take a look at it? Uh recently, there's somebody, in fact, yesterday, somebody talked to me about some signings that got, I got hit by the lawnmower or something. The district signs were down. They don't replace, you know, so I think. It's good that we get the feedback. We want to encourage people to talk to us and we need to let staff know. Before we can close the loop.
And then we can respond on it, right? We continue our next steps and, you know, particularly if there's something that's out there that needs attention. Immediately, you know, one, one call so we can address it and put that in.
That would be directed to staff. I mean, why, you know, for this one, I just, I don't know, I. Thought this was the okay time.
I think it was appropriate.
Yeah, absolutely. And you've got a both agendas. You can always, at any point. Under Open Meetings Act, you can only vote on things that are specifically explicit to vote on. If you can bring up any topic for conversation or future consideration, um.
Yeah, the Huntley, the Huntley one, if I remember right, was they actually voted on something that wasn't on the consent agenda, so. So they're arguing that, wait a minute, that, that shouldn't be a legitimate vote. We wouldn't do anything like that.
Now with the president we have.
Some big animal, buddy. Alright, is, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll second. We're on, second.
Okay.
Together.
Hey.
Kate, will people eat some, please?
Yeah.
Uh Fratina Lady.
Yes.
Secretary Zeller.
Yeah.
Vice President Wendor.
Yeah.
Fratina Brady.
Yes.
President Neverman.
Yes.
President Everard.
Alright, we are adjourned.